Alrighty, it is April 28th, 2022 of our City Council Special Work Session calling to order. Just as notice to the public, we may vote to go into executive session on any of the agenda items for legal advice. With that, roll call, please.
Mayor DC.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sweet.
Here.
Councilmember Asland.
Here.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Here.
Councilmember Salas.
Present.
Councilmember Shmoni.
Present.
Thank you. How about Councilmember Shmoni lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Absolutely. Please stand if you're able to.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And let's do it. Councilmember Salas, would you mind doing our mission statement, please?
I'm honored to do so. The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor, Land Acknowledgement, please.
Thank you. The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by native descendants, border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And that brings us to Agenda Item Number Four, our City Council Vacancy Interviews. Do you want to, I assume, say a few words here, City Clerk?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Stacy Salzberg, City Clerk. So I just wanted to provide a really quick kind of rundown about how we've gotten to where we are today. So we started this process a little while ago, went through an application period, and earlier this week, we heard from 14 different candidates. They provided us some introductions of themselves, why they want to serve on the City Council. And you have decided to bring six of them back to go through a formal interview process. So that's where we're at today. We do have seven interview questions that you have established beforehand. There will be a random rotation of those questions for each candidate. Each candidate will have three minutes to answer each interview question. If a follow-up question is asked, an additional three minutes will be allotted to them to answer that follow-up. Really, at this point tonight, we'll hear these interviews, and we'll look to council for any further direction from a staff perspective. So I'm here for any questions, otherwise, we can get started.
Thank you, City Clerk. Yeah, Councilmember Shmoni.
Thank you, Mayor. Quick question for you, Stacy. Can you remind me the how we're handling the follow-up questions? Is it the person who's asking the question can then ask another follow-up?
That is my understanding of our discussions leading up to this. But again, this is your process, council, so if you're all comfortable with that, we'll go with that.
Very good, thank you.
Yeah, and Councilmember Asland.
A separate question. I don't know if you wanted to follow up on that other thing first.
Well, I'll just note that, yes, that's what we had agreed to, that we can follow up on our own questions if there's additional clarifications. But to help not create such a jumble of lots of questions and multiple members wanting to jump in, that we had decided to just have a follow-up on our own questions that we formalized. And just as notice to the public, these individual questions were developed by each individual member of council independently, well, not independently, through collaboration amongst all of us, but we have individualized those questions to kind of look at what we are interested in as members. And in addition, they are randomized for each of our candidates, and the list of interviewees in that order was completely randomized. So just for everyone's knowledge. And Councilmember Asland.
Thank you, Mayor. So at some point today, I realized that this was a fully public process, which means that the interviewees were going to get the questions ahead of time, except for the first person to go. And so we arranged to make sure that those, all the questions were available to everybody with some hours' notice, just in an effort for fairness and equal access to, you know, the playing field. I just wanted to double-check for the record if everybody was able to access those questions a little bit early this afternoon. I see all head nods, so thank you.
Excellent.
Thanks for putting my mind at ease.
And thank you, Councilmember Asland, for proposing that today. So with that, I will also note that, oh, sorry, Councilmember Salas.
Sorry to interrupt, Mr. Mayor. Do we have any time limit for each question or for each candidate?
So each candidate will have three minutes to answer each question.
Does that include the follow-up?
No, they'll be allotted an additional three minutes if a follow-up question is asked.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. And I will also note, if you'd prefer to be seated, there are the mics right here, and the mic on this side is also available for anyone who doesn't want to be standing at the podium. So those are all hot mics.
Just make sure you push the button to turn the mic on.
Okay, yeah. Not hot yet, except that.
Not hot yet.
But thank you, Ms. Salzberg. And is there any other questions from council before we proceed? All right.
Thank you.
I don't have to dance?
That's for the, that'll be right before public participation in case anybody wants to comment.
Executive session, I'm gonna say that for now.
So, yeah, with that, we are starting with Alethea Carlin. Thank you for being here, Alethea, and...
Thanks so much for inviting me back.
Our pleasure. And again, these are in random order for each individual, and I'll call on the council member who has their question to ask. So with that, Ms. Carlin, we have Councilmember Salas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Alethea. Thank you for being here today. Elaborate on your understanding of the City Manager, City Council Form of Government.
All right, this is good. So as far as my understanding, City Council is elected by people, and we're more or less kind of like a board, like a board of directors, but not quite. So we're voter voted on, so people want us in office to represent them. And the mayor, everyone has one voice, one vote. Mayor has one vote, is kind of like the president of the board, if you will. And the city manager is in charge of day-to-day and everything, hiring, firing, planning. They are like the big brain, and we are the voting body, is my understanding.
Describe your decision-making process within the City Manager, City Council Form of Government.
So I think it would depend, decision-making process would depend on the question that would be proposed. So I, just as a general basis, like, would I have my knowledge of City Council and how Flagstaff would work? You know, if the question, basing my knowledge on the regional plan, is going to be first in my wheelhouse. And consulting with my peers, which would be you guys, what are your opinions? What are you hearing from your constituents? What am I hearing from my constituents? And I know that they're all the same constituents, but we each are going to pull a draw from different segments of the population who are like, I really support you, but the people who support me may have a completely different opinion than the people who support you. So I want to know what the people you are talking to are listening. You know, what are they saying? What are the people who talk to me, what are they saying? What is it, how does that fit in with the regional plan as well? And also, with everyone else who works at the city. There are so many big departments and amazing, intelligent people who are, they do all the heavy lifting, and their opinions, their expertise is going to weigh in heavy in addition. So there's many different pieces to that puzzle that I would have to think about and put together in order to come up with a good decision.
Thank you, Ms. Carlin. With that, we are to Vice Mayor Sweet.
Thank you, and thank you for being here. Please describe your decision-making process when potentially conflicting priorities and/or values are involved.
This is good. It feels like a follow-up to her follow-up question. So I like fact-based decision-making, for the most part. If I ever have a big life, personal decision, or a friend does, let's look at the facts. Let's research as much as possible. And working for the city, you have a lot of people who do that research, and so it's consulting with your experts. And also, so I put in here analyzing information and data pertaining to the situation, as well as weighing in opinions of my cohort. So that really ties together what I spoke to just a bit ago, is your opinions matter, the voters' opinions matter, and the people who do this professionally, more professionally than just being voted in, who, this is their expertise, this is their field, their opinions really matter too. So that's how I would weigh any challenging decision, is it's not, it's not my decision alone. And I think that's what's really important, is that your decision should represent everybody as best as you can, as long as it's in accordance with your values.
Thank you. Any follow-up, Vice Mayor?
No.
Thank you. Councilmember Shmoni.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi there, Alethea, welcome. So my question is, give an example of when you felt that people of underrepresented backgrounds were not given, were not being treated in a way you were okay with, and what did you do?
I would like to say, I love giving a voice to the voiceless, the people who, they can't stand up for themselves, they don't have the ability, maybe they're not old enough to stand up for themselves. Being able to advocate for any person or group of persons in their best interest is a gift. When I worked at the Guidance Center, ensuring that children of various backgrounds, and I don't want to give any specifics out of confidentiality, and I realize it's been quite a while since I worked at the Guidance Center, but I still really respect the families I worked with, and though they may be adults at this point in time, their situations are unique and private. But oftentimes, I had to gather, you know, a group of people, a whole care team together to make sure that this individual had everything they needed, you know, be it CPS or the school system with IEPs, their teachers, their counselors, you know, other staff at the Guidance Center, other agencies of community mental health. Sometimes it was just this gigantic group working for one individual, and it was my job as a case manager to be this child's voice. I am their voice, this is their best interest, and not as if it's a big power thing, but when you don't have the ability to speak for yourself, when you don't feel old enough, you don't have that legal representation, I mean, it matters to have somebody who's listening. If a child or an entire community, as long as there's somebody, I care, I listen, I'm there for you, I will get your point across, is what's, is that?
It is, and I actually do have a follow-up.
Yeah.
Awesome. So when confronting opposition, how do you stay strong to those voices that are not in the room?
You know, honestly, gut instinct is to run, is to opposition, but I think having a really good team, having friends on your side, feeling like, okay, here's an example. This isn't opposition, you aren't opposition, you are not opposition, but I'm anxious, and having a friend to sit next to you, a new friend to sit next to, and I feel like I have this connection and a care, I feel stronger. So working with you guys, knowing you on an individual basis, if I get the chance to sit down, have coffee with you, understand how you work, we're friends, we can work together, we can face the opposition together. And otherwise, my community can be my team, I will face opposition with them as a team.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Councilmember McCarthy.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Flagstaff has a pilot alternative response program to serve as an alternative to traditional police responses to 911 calls. Do you believe that police funding should be reduced to fully implement this program? And then, as a related question, how would you approach the issue of public safety in general?
I really love this question. This was a really challenging one when I got them.
Well, thank you.
And I want, partially, I want to read, I mean, ad lib a little bit. So the first thing I did was I researched, I typed in the Google machine about what did Flagstaff do? How did you guys come up with your process? And I saw that when it was proposed in October of 2020, you had these big, beautiful slides upon your City Council, excuse me, you can look at it, it's there. I mean, your transparency for that is beautiful. It was there for me to reference, it's there for anybody to reference. But my point is that it gave examples of, in Denver, it was voter-approved by a grant, that's how they paid for that program. In Anchorage, Alaska, it was funded by the taxpayers. In Mesa, it was originally funded by taxpayers. You gave the example of Memphis, but it didn't say how that funding was done for that slide. And in Eugene, the same program was run by a nonprofit. So there are alternate methods of funding that the city can come up with, and not me, not you, but our team can come up with, so that we're not taking money away from our police. Our police does a very crucial job for the city. And honestly, I feel like they could be underfunded, like, they could be paid better. They provide a valuable service. We need good, strong policemen, kind, who feel like they are valued by the community, and I certainly value them. And when we have a response team to work in coordination with them, it better supports the community, and it better supports the police. It gives the police that backup of, you know, this is more your expertise, response team, can you please help us handle this? We'll kind of be behind you in case something goes, you know, sketchy, or vice versa. So they can, and so that's where I think, how would I approach the issue of public safety? That's a beautiful way to approach the issue of public safety, is coordination between two different agencies within the same realm, working in coordination with each other. And I think they can be funded fully without taking away from one or the other. I think there are creative ways that the city can come up with, so that they're both fully supported.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. All right, next up is my question, which is, how have your policy, excuse me, how have your policy views changed over time? Give an example when you have changed your mind on a critical and salient issue that could have a substantial impact on our community as a council member. Why did you change your mind on that issue?
All right. So there is this big, beautiful, incredible sunflower field that's right across from Cheshire, and it is the spot, and it is hotly debated. And there are two big sides. There is this or that. And as a normal, average citizen, this is how I viewed it, this is how it was presented in the media, we have this, or you have that, you can't have both. So with further education on the matter, under, to give you my viewpoint to begin, what I would have, what I supported, let's keep them flowers. That's 100% what I backed, is I love our open spaces. But with further education, with learning more about that exact spot of land, learning that only 20% of that spot would be developed, that has the infrastructure already there, that the city controls that parcel, they could control the cost, that could be housing for our police, our firefighters, our healthcare workers, this would provide a good service for the community. So my policy opinion on that would change, or the way I would vote on that change, based on furthering my education. So there's a way in which something was originally presented, and doing more research, I kind of went, oh, wow, I had no idea. And so I changed my viewpoint.
Thank you. Next is Councilmember Asland.
Oh, thank you. We're going through this quickly. Thank you, Alethea, for going first.
Of course.
You didn't exactly choose to do that, but I appreciate your enthusiasm and willingness anyway. You know, and before we start, I just want you to know, I grew up with an autistic brother, which means I grew up with a mother of an autistic child. And I have it on pretty good authority that there is a rainbow-flavored golden castle waiting for every mother of an autistic child in heaven. So thank you for just being a parent. Really appreciate everything that you need to go through to traverse that. So my question is, the City of Flagstaff is aiming for carbon neutrality by 2030. This lofty goal is the product of a bottom-up, community-driven process that has determined the global climate crisis be treated locally like the emergency that it is. Council has also recognized another emergency driven by the ground-up related to affordable housing. Are these two urgent challenges compatible with each other, or are they at odds? And how will you address both crises simultaneously? How will you look at the question of Flagstaff's potential explosive growth over the next two decades through these two different lenses?
First, I want to say, I feel honored to be my son's mom. It's a beautiful, it's a gift, it's absolutely a gift, it's not, it's not a challenge in any way, it's what I was blessed with. But to touch on your question now, so I feel thankful that the city and Kokona County have experts who are working on your regional plan. And so you guys are aware, I'm aware, Flagstaff is growing, Flagstaff has been growing pretty much every 20-year, we're 20 years, so between like 1980 and 2000, about 45% growth between 2000 and 2020, another 45% growth. And so the, you know, the prospects of growth, it's huge, it's really big. And so this is a very, very important question. And in viewing what the city is working on, what the experts are working on, there is a balance between sustainability and affordable housing. And one of the least popular ways to address this is by those, not quite the hub style, but having multifamily units, where you're going to be sharing, you're saving on heat because you have shared walls, and you have people living within a smaller space together, and you live closer to maybe work centers. So your city planners are working on these big regional center, you know, activity centers within the city, and where these big housing units can be. And I think they go hand-in-hand, carbon neutrality and growth and sustainability, if we can do it in a way where we're educating our public. So thinking about this big growth, as somebody who grew up here, it feels scary to me, and I get an emotional response, and the voters are going to get an emotional response. And so that's where transparency and education, and the city's doing a phenomenal job with like your YouTube channel to try to educate the public, here is our process, here's how we're doing it. But, you know, for me to encourage other people to learn more, so that they feel more at peace with it. Growth is an inevitability, it's happening. Either we do it in a haphazard way, or we do it in a very thoughtful, controlled, planned way, which is what the goals are of the City of Flagstaff.
Do you want to have a follow-up question?
I do, yeah. Thank you very much for that thoughtful response. So what I'd like to know is, just up or down, do you believe in that climate change is real and that humans have a role to play in that? And also, do you think that we are on the, that we're capable of achieving carbon neutrality by 2030, or do you think we're crazy?
I don't think we're crazy. I mean, that's really fast, and there is, there are a lot of components into carbon neutrality, and I can't speak on that, I don't, I don't have that answer, I haven't done that research yet. But I feel like having that type of a lofty goal is good, because that's going to mean that we will try harder, we will push harder to be, like, when you're coming up with a deadline, you know, if I know I have a whole month to come up with this paper, I'm going to wait, you know, weeks, but it's right there, 10 years, it's right there. So that's good. And I absolutely believe in global warming, climate change, there's no denying it, there's scientists, there's no denying it, it is factual at this point, as far as I'm concerned. There are people who will disagree with me, and I will listen to their viewpoints, of course, and have a discussion with them if they want, but those are my, I guess, my personal views.
Thank you. Well, we do have the last question. I thought, I didn't know this one was going to be randomized in it, because I thought this was going to be the icebreaker, but it's probably the most important question of all, which is, what is your favorite breakfast cereal and why?
My favorite breakfast cereal is oatmeal, and let me tell you why. Because you can make it in so many different ways. You can make it sweet, you can make it savory. When I make it sweet for my kids, I ask them, do you want this type, or this type, or this type? Lemon poppy seed is their favorite. I like to make savory with za'atar seasoning and tahini on top, and sometimes a fried egg. That is exactly, it's tight, it's amazing. So oatmeal is the most versatile, hearty, and healthy breakfast cereal.
Solid. Yeah, I'm going to allow a follow-up from Councilmember McCarthy on this one.
Do you prefer one-minute oatmeal or five-minute oatmeal?
Old-fashioned, it has to be old-fashioned. I mean, I use one-minute depending, but I like the old-fashioned, it's better for the fiber and your gut.
Well, thank you, Alethea, that's the end of the questions, really, really appreciate you being here and taking the, you know, first stab at all of this, you did very well, so.
Thank you guys so much for having me, I really appreciate it. I like that I feel a little bit more relaxed, and I see humor in all of your eyes, and it's worth it for me, so that makes me happy. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Well, I was part of an interview process just a week ago, and I felt like I was walking into a parole hearing. I actually really didn't appreciate the tone in the room, and it threw me off my guard, it made me nervous. So I encourage all of you to just be relaxed and be yourselves, and we'll try to have fun up here. This is great fun for me, this is the perfect way to spend a Thursday afternoon.
Thank you. With that, next is, let's clap for Alethea, I want to be able to, I mean, all of you applicants who have come out and stuck your neck out for this and been involved, we just really appreciate you. This is not a small decision to have applied, so thank you for putting yourselves out there.
Next up is Jake Bacon.
Al White, please.
Mayor, if I might?
Yes.
Just a reminder to all of our candidates as well, if you could be sure to just speak into the microphone, we want to make sure that everybody out in our virtual land can hear you, just a friendly reminder.
Thank you, City Clerk. Asland, how you doing today, Al? Alrighty.
Hi, everybody.
Thanks for being with us.
Can we start with number seven?
Start with number seven. How did that get on last place twice in a row?
You told me that you wanted that to be the very last question for every applicant.
I thought that was going to be the first, okay, maybe I mixed up. I thought that was going to be the icebreaker question.
Now, if you would like to lead with that, Mayor, you go right ahead.
No, I like the end being a little lighter, I think that sets a good tone for next folks. So with that, oh, Vice Mayor Sweet has the first question.
Thank you, and thanks for being here. So my question, please describe your decision-making process when potentially conflicting priorities and/or values are involved.
So my approach is to go to the parties that are involved and talk to them, find out where, essentially where they're coming from, what it is that they want to try to get out of a particular decision. And having done that, you can discover where they're at, where they're in unison, or where they're at loggerheads. And then becomes the process of kind of negotiating, what would, what could you give up, or what could they do, or what could be done to make you guys see this thing eye to eye? And then, quite often, I find that there might be an overreaching concern that they hadn't thought of, that would help them to, that would appeal to their cause of common good, or a collective win-win situation. would appeal to their, their cause of common good, or, or a, a collective win-win situation. So, that's how I've approached those kinds of things in the past. Sometimes you got to really go out there and find those folks, because a lot of people are afraid to bring things up. So, I think the act of soliciting opinions is very important.
Do you have a follow-up?
Can you give an example, a specific example, that maybe you have experienced this?
The very first impact fee discussion that we had, impact fees were either you were on board, or you were against them. And, and we were able to come to a decision that, that even the most adamant foe of impact fees was, were acceptable, was acceptable to those folks. And that was that we would have them, they would be reduced, number one, and number two, they would apply to police and fire. And, and we found universal acceptance there, and were able to put them in. It was still a four to three vote in those days, but impact fees were established, and they helped to start to collect some money to, to have growth pay for itself.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Next is Councilmember Shimoni.
Thank you, mayor, and hi, Al. Good to see you. Give an example of when you felt that people of underrepresented backgrounds were not being treated in a way you were okay with, and what did you do?
Okay. When Heritage Square was being built, the, somehow the city had allowed them to put in a seven-foot ceiling on the underground parking area. That eliminated, at the time, the standard for an accessible vehicle was at eight foot six height. And, and that eliminated one of the accessible spaces that had the crosshatch next to it. That was unacceptable, because parking was at a limited availability downtown, anyway. And so, I went to City Hall, and, and I was routed to the city manager, and I said, this is essentially unacceptable. And, and they responded, and they went out and hit the streets and kind of figured out, because they had approved the construction and the seven-foot ceiling, they were at a loss as to what they could do to accommodate, and came up with four parking spaces in the lot across from Charlie's on La Rue, one of which was, was donated by the Heritage Square Foundation. And they also provided $10,000 a year to, to try to buy more accessible spaces throughout the downtown area. Later on, that, that, a different council expanded that to all accessible spaces.
Thank you. Any follow-ups, Councilmember Shimoni? All right, Councilmember Salsan.
Thank you very much. Hi, Al. So, the city of Flagstaff is aiming for carbon neutrality by 2030. It's a lofty goal, and it's the product of bottom-up, community-driven process that has demanded the global climate crisis be treated locally like the emergency that it is. And council, council recently has also recognized another emergency driven by the bottom-up, related to affordable housing. What do you think? Are these two urgent challenges compatible with each other, or are they at loggerheads, as you say? How do you address both crises simultaneously? How will you look at the question of Flagstaff's potential explosive growth over the next two decades through these two different lenses?
So, I don't think that they're necessarily at odds with each other. I don't know that they're necessarily associated with each other on a regular basis, but I think that's something that we could do. And so, and so, and particularly where I think the, the built environment is the answer to this question, I think. And, and the built environment, I've been accused of, of favoring transportation that fa, that features cars. And, and I really don't. I feature transportation methods that are put out there that will accommodate any kind of transportation mode, be it an automobile, horse and buggy, skateboard, wheelchair, Segway, you name it, bicycle, bicycle, Adam. And, and so, I think that the, that the answer is basically to try to build in a grid pattern with north-south connections. Now, that's tough in Flagstaff, because we're built along a railway, and 100 trains a day interrupt that north-south. But that's why I favor, and always was a, was a champion for the Fourth Street Overpass, and now the Lone Tree Overpass, I think, should be that way as, or should be implemented. And I would go with more. I think that we missed an opportunity at Fourth Street, at the interchange on I-40 at Fourth Street as well. But north-south connections and roundabouts in terms of, as opposed to intersections, I think are a smart move. And in most cases, I think that helps with the, the non-automotive modes of traffic, because it slows traffic down. So, the built environment in terms of housing, and in terms of, if you have a grid pattern, and you have businesses and homes in the same place, and you have density in those things as well, I think that that efficiency helps to keep things affordable, or make things a little bit more affordable as well. I think that's everything I have on that one. Planned subdivisions. For example, we, we're, at some point in time, we're going to have the issue of Section 20. Section 20 is at the end of Butler Avenue, where it says temporary dead end right now. That's a, that's a state land section. It's a lot, it's 40 acres. The, the way we design and implement growth there, I think would be, could be a perfect example of what I'm talking about.
Okay, so I have you down for better horse and buggy infrastructure.
Yeah.
So, carbon neutrality by 2030, is, is that achievable?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Carbon neutrality by 2030.
I don't know.
What do you think?
But here, but here's the thing. Why would you set a goal of, of less? When I was the executive housekeeper at the Grand Canyon, my standard of cleanliness in a room was perfection. I knew we were never going to get there, but it didn't make any sense to set a lower standard. And so, I think that you've set yourself a marvelous goal. I don't know that you're going to get it. The built environment contributes as much, I think, to, to carbon, the carbon problem, as, as automobiles do. And so, to me, it's a far more practical way to try to approach it than to say, we're not going to allow cars, or we're going to try to restrict cars, or we're going to try to do something about. I mean, the marketplace may take care of that with electric cars, as long as they can create the electricity through renewables.
Thank you. Councilmember Solis is next.
Thank you for being here. Elaborate on your understanding of the city manager, city council form of government, and describe your decision-making process within the city manager, city council form of government.
So, the council manager form basically dictates that the council is a policy body, and the, the city manager is responsible for the implementation of that policy. And while the city manager recommends the budget and creates the agenda for the meetings, the, the council certainly can add agenda items and, and provide direction to the city for, for the way they want to move the, the city forward in future planning. The, the, that form of government precludes city council members directing staff. You are responsible for the city manager, the city attorney, and the magistrates. And other than that, those areas, or those positions cover and supervise the rest of the staff. The decision-making process is a consensus of four or more to initiate an action. And the council does policy, the manager does practice, budget, direction, and future planning in conjunction with the city council. Is that a, that's my understanding, anyway?
So, the second part of my question is, describe your decision-making process within the city manager, city council form of government.
Oh, well, it's a, four, majority rules. Four, four people make the decision. I found, or I think, that, that it's best if you can reach a consensus, and you have, and frankly, 99% of the things you do are unanimous. They are the business of the city. They are, you know, buy a fire truck, staff the police department, streets, so forth and so on. And so, and so, the decision-making process, when it's contentious, then, I think, becomes a question of enough debate, enough public input, enough soliciting the, the contrary opinions to, to work out a consensus. And if you can't work out a consensus, that's why you have an odd number, and you vote, and it's four to three, or five to two, or whatever it is. I hope that answers your question.
The specific question is, ask about your decision-making process within the city manager, city council form of government.
My decision-making process is to hear, hear all sides, and, and then kind of come down on what I think isn't necessarily the best for me, but the best for the citizens of Flagstaff. And I try to do it with an eye to the future, because so many decisions get made that are temporary and/or stopgap, that, that we lose sight of the fact that we're supposed to be focused on 10, 20, 30, 40, 50 years from now. Thanks for the follow-up.
Thank you. And then the next is myself. How have your policy views changed over time? Give an example when you have changed your mind on a critical and salient issue that could have a substantial impact on our community as a city council member. Why did you change your mind on that issue?
Okay, so, so overall, I think my views have, have, they've become more specific than general, in terms of broad, over, overreaching policies that, that may not have a chance to survive in a, in a debate-oriented environment. I think I've, I've changed my policies to thinking more specific. Specific things that will start things and can get them moving, and create small successes that then breed larger successes. And the example I would use is the affordable housing arena. For a long, long time, I was very supportive, and still am to a certain extent, of examining the entire continuum of housing, and trying to address problems within each area of it. But I find that that has watered down, to a certain extent, our capability to create new units. You've got a plan now that calls for a gap of 7,900 units, and, and 254 to be built on city land in the next 10 years. That doesn't cut it. It doesn't get the prob, the, the job done. So, I want to concentrate on kind of creating permanent affordable units. I've changed my mind based on the fact that I don't think that current policies are getting us there. And I think that we need to enter into more long-term contracts with partners that let them make their money back by charging less to the, to the tenant. And, and tenants can then opt to live in these units and live there forever, and that takes care of police officers and schoolteachers and so forth. Or they can save up to enter the, the, the Flagstaff housing market, the free market, by having a down payment and not having to spend 50% plus on the, on their, I mean, that just, that just ruins the economy in a million ways. You spend all your money on housing, you got nothing to do to spend on the other things that keep a, an economy vibrant. So, so, I guess that's my big example. Is there more to that question that, that I missed? So, yeah, that's why, that's why I changed my mind.
Thank you, Al.
You're welcome.
Councilmember McCarthy is next.
Al, my question for you is, Flagstaff has a pilot alternative response program to serve as an alternative to traditional police responses to 911 calls. Do you believe that police funding should be reduced to fully implement this program? And then, secondly, how would you approach the issue of public safety in general?
I think "defund the police" is probably the most misunderstood and deceiving slogan of recent times. And, and the alternative response is turning out, as, as I learned at the budget retreat, sitting with Dan, it's turning out to work wonders and do some great things. And, and it's saving some time and energy on the part of the police department to, to devote their time to protection and the things that we really need a police force to protect and serve. So, so I don't think that we need a reduction in police funding. I think that we need to find additional funds to continue to expand what this alternative response. Frankly, I'm quite proud of you. That alternative response is something that I think is really, really going to, going to go, go places. In fact, I think we should bring that discussion to our government partners. NAU has a police force, the Kokonino County Sheriff, and, and I think they can learn from this example, and we can spread that, that success story elsewhere.
Thank you, Al. Thank you, mayor.
You're welcome. Is, is the breakfast, is this the breakfast question?
Yes, it is. The, the most critical.
I want you to know, I think this is a trick question. Because if somebody has to spend three minutes on it, they're going to be too long-winded to sit up there. So, so my favorite is Wheaties, because it's the breakfast of champions. And my second, and my second is Cashew Island Vanilla. Have you tried that? Man, it is outstanding. And why? Because they both go well with bananas and blueberries.
That was a solid answer.
Invite me to join you. We'll have more fun like this.
I'm, I'm going to be asking that of each of council members afterward, too, because I'm really curious now, after we've put this on the list. Well, thank you, Al. Really appreciate your time and being here.
You're welcome. You're welcome, and good luck. I too think you can't go wrong with who you have in this room.
All right. All right, I'm pulling up the next list here of randomized questions. But we do have Cara House next. Thank you for being with us. The first question is coming from Councilmember McCarthy.
I'd be surprised if you're surprised by this question, but here it goes. Flagstaff has a pilot alternative response program to serve as an alternative to traditional police responses to 911 calls. Do you believe that police funding should be reduced to fully implement this program? And then, how would you approach the issue of public safety in general?
I was going to start off by saying I am stunned by this question, but I'm not. I saw it coming. So, I think I'm going to answer it a little bit in reverse, because in terms of how I would approach the issue of public safety, this is the approach that I love. I was thrilled by the presentation of the collaboration between traditional public safety response through the police, and alternative response options, which keep people out of the justice system, and especially those who, who may have other things going on that, once they enter that system, there may be no way out for them. So, I highly value alternative response options in public safety. In terms of funding, I don't believe that police funding should be reduced to implement alternative response programs. I believe that they are collaborating with each other, and so, public safety funding should be dispersed equitably between those sorts of programs. I agree with Al White, who went before me, in I agree with Al White, who went before me, in that discussion about, you know, "defund the police" and what the heart of that concern is for people. I believe that when it comes to having public safety response to issues, there needs to be those ways of responding to them that don't necessarily enter people into the criminal justice system, that provide them with the resources that they need to get the help that they need, whether it's access to sobriety programming, or mental and behavioral health programs, or other things like that, that give them the help that they need without being irreparably entered into a system that is very hard to exit out of. So I hope that answers the question.
I think it does. So you're saying you would fund both alternative response and the police. You would not reduce the police spending to implement the others. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes.
All right. Thank you, and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Next is Councilmember Rasslin.
Okay, this is going to start feeling long-winded, but to give due diligence to the process, I'll go ahead and read through it here. So the city of Flagstaff is aiming for carbon neutrality by 2030. It's a lofty goal, but it's the product of a bottom-up, community-driven process, which is demanding that global climate crisis be treated locally like the emergency that it is. Council has also recognized another emergency driven by the ground up, and this one is related to affordable housing. I'd like to know if these two urgent challenges are compatible with each other or at odds. How would you address both crises simultaneously? How will you look at the question of Flagstaff's potential explosive growth over the next two decades through these two different lenses?
What's funny about this question is that I just had this conversation. I sit on the City of Flagstaff's Housing Commission, and we were just having a furtherance of a conversation about a joint meeting between housing and sustainability. As a result of that, I can say wholeheartedly that I do not see these as being at odds with each other, and I do see there being a lot of room for collaboration. My approach with this, and what I shared at both the last meeting that we had as a joint group and at today's meeting, was that I think we have a responsibility to look at where collaboration between sustainability or carbon neutrality and housing is natural and easy. We also have a responsibility to look at where conflict is going to naturally occur between what we want for each of those goals. That doesn't mean that we have to sacrifice one for the other. It means that we have a lot of hard work to do to figure out, how do we collaborate to address those conflicts in a way that doesn't sacrifice one for the other, that helps us to see an alternative path to achieving both goals?
Thank you. So I'll ask you a similar follow-up question about your beliefs in whether or not we're able to achieve our carbon neutrality goals by 2030, but throw a curveball in there, too. I'm just curious how optimistic you are about our ability to tackle the affordable housing issue in the next decade.
I think my answer, thank you for the curveball. I think my answer for that is the same as it would be for addressing carbon neutrality, which is, both are very difficult. Difficult does not mean impossible. I think we have a lot of challenges for both, but that doesn't mean that we can't solve those problems. Because you specifically asked about affordability, housing affordability is a nationwide problem. It's not unique to Flagstaff. It's not unique to Arizona. But the challenges that Flagstaff faces with affordability are, in its own way, very unique because of the desire to maintain open space, because of the desire to reach carbon neutrality. Those throw little challenges in along the pathway to creating affordable housing options. But as I said, I don't see those as conflicts. I see them as just what they are, challenges, in determining how we reach both. So I do think it's possible for us to create the necessary housing that we need. That's why I actively participated in and actually wrote a lot of the opening letter for the 10-year housing plan, in saying that I think these are things that we can achieve as long as we're willing to collaborate and work together to achieve them.
Thank you. Next is Councilmember Solis.
Thank you for being here, Cara. So elaborate on your understanding of the city manager, city council, form of government, and describe your decision-making process within the city manager, city council, form of government.
So in answering this question, I realized that I'm kind of a nerd when it comes to these things. The weirdest things excite me, and this is one of them. What really excites me about the city manager, city council, form of government is the amount of collaboration that it requires and the way that it reminds me of and mirrors the checks and balances of our higher governance systems. In my mind, city council is the elected representatives of the people. They make decisions, they bring forth policies, they bring forth recommendations for the advancement of the city. The city manager is the administrative arm, where they are taking those policies and those considerations and making the decisions that help to advance that work. I also see the city's use of commissions and committees as part of that process, and there being unelected people but brought forth by council to help feed into the decisions that council is making. So seeing all of that work coming together, we were having a discussion before coming in today about this question in particular, and I shared this excitement, about how that level of collaboration in city decision-making means that there is never one person making the decision. It is collaborative with many voices throughout the community, and I think that's so important because I think it so often goes unseen. That's part of the behind-the-scenes matter of what happens in city governance. But what it means is that people's voices are heard as part of that process, and we're able to collaborate to see what's working for the betterment of the city as a whole. When it comes to my own form of decision-making, I think you'll all get tired of hearing me use this word, but collaborative is the way that I approach decision-making. I never want my voice to be the only one brought into making a decision. I want to hear from everyone. I want to hear from people who agree with me and people who have a different perspective. Because I think in hearing that perspective that differs from my own, my own perspective is just advanced and furthered, not hindered or limited by opposition. So I try and research and find as many voices as possible to speak into whatever the concern is, and seek that consensus among those voices to figure out, how can we come together to make a decision that works the best for as many people as possible?
Thank you. Next is my question. How have your policy views changed over time? Give an example when you have changed your mind on a critical and salient issue that could have a substantial impact on our community as a city council member. Why did you change your mind on that issue?
So in terms of policy views over time, I consider myself a lifelong learner. So I think my opinions are always changing, the more that I learn. The more that I learn, the more that I research issues, the more I'm willing to change from just what I think about an issue. An example of that for me is infrastructure, which feels like such a strange answer to give, but there was a time that I would not have called it a critical and salient issue. I recently had a conversation where we were talking about housing and the social determinants of health. And the woman who I was speaking to was bringing up infrastructure in terms of sidewalks and pedways and parkways and different things like that. And the statement that I made was that I don't see those as part of the social determinants of health because they're kind of separate. And her response back was just, "Really?" And that response in itself made me stop and think about, well, why am I not seeing the connection, and where is the connection there? And in realizing that, yes, a park has a major impact on health. Sidewalks have a major impact on health, especially if you're tripping over them. So all of those things coming together, whether it's internet access, or all of those things that come into infrastructure, it is a major player in a way that I had not recognized before. And so realizing that, it helped to create a lens in myself that says, I need to look at the bigger picture when making even a smaller decision.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next is Vice Mayor Sweet.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Please describe your decision-making process when potentially conflicting priorities and/or values are involved. And if you want to throw in an example, that would be great.
Absolutely. It may surprise you to hear me say this, but I take a collaborative approach. I told you, you're going to get sick of me using that word. But I'm also, I consider myself a consensus seeker. And to me, consensus doesn't mean full agreement. It means reaching that point of enough agreement that we can move forward, where both sides or all sides of an issue are willing to give and take a little bit, so that you can do what's best for, again, the most people as possible. In terms of a specific example for me, I'd say at least half of my job currently is working towards collaborative solutions to resident concerns. I work in multifamily housing. My role is the Director of Community Engagement, and part of that role is escalated resident concerns. I joke that that means that the angriest residents come to me, but really what it means is that those residents who are really seeking a collaborative solution to their problem come to me, and that's thrilling for me. Because what it means is that I get to hear all sides of the issue. When a resident comes to me, I ask them, tell me all of the details of what's going on in this situation. What went wrong? What's the problem? And what's the solution that you're hoping for that would help to restore the trust between you and your community team? At the same time as I'm doing that, I'm going to the site team and asking them, tell me what happened in this situation. Tell me where communication went wrong. What do you think that you did to resolve the situation? And what do you need me to bring into the solutions that's presented? And what are you willing to give as part of the solution to this? Or what are you looking for as the solution? When I'm presenting a solution, then, it's never my solution. I'm taking what the resident shares and taking it back to the team and saying, this is what they're looking for? What are we willing to do? Or what are we willing to give in this? And do you see now where this person is coming from and why they had the response that they did? And I do the same with the resident. I want them to understand that I'm there to be an advocate for them, but I also want them to understand the policies and procedures that go behind the decision that their team made. In that sort of decision-making, I think nobody is ever 100% satisfied because you're not always giving exactly what either side wants, but you're helping them to see each other's perspective, and you're helping them to come to a place that they can move forward together rather than continuing on separately. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Shimoney.
Hi, Cara. Give an example of when you felt that people of underrepresented backgrounds were not being treated in a way you were okay with, and what did you do?
So in the field that I work in, in multifamily, this comes up the most in a phrase that's called disparate impact. And it's not a popular phrase within the industry because it leads to a lot of policy challenges. What disparate impact says is that there are policies or procedures that are sometimes put in place for the best of intentions, but have that sort of a disparate impact on historically marginalized communities. And so it asks for us to take a more holistic approach in looking at what are the impacts that this decision is going to make on those groups. What I'll focus here on, in terms of how I deal with that sort of impact, is the work that I've done with the Live Black Experience Project, the Coconino County African Diaspora Advisory Council, and the Coconino County Tri-Diversity Councils. And the work of each of those groups has been to elevate the voices that often go unheard. I spoke the other day about changing in my perspective on bringing voice to the voiceless because I think each person or each group has a voice of their own, so they don't need me to give them a voice. But what they do need is an advocate and an ally who's willing to say, I'm going to sacrifice my voice or my power to empower this other group, to bring forth the perspectives that they have that might have gone unheard otherwise, and help them to get to that table to be part of the decision-making. I'm someone who is relentless in the pursuit of equity, and I always want to be bringing forward that question of, how is this impacting the group that we're not thinking about? Who is not at the table right now in this decision? And how can we bring them into it so that we're not overlooking them in the decision that we're going to make?
Thank you.
Thank you. And the question of the hour, what is your favorite breakfast cereal and why?
So I joked earlier with some of the folks outside that my honest answer to this question is that I'm not a breakfast person, and I was afraid that if I said that, I was going to get, just like, get out.
You're done.
But when I think about my favorite breakfast cereal, my favorite is actually cream of wheat, and I'll tell you why. It's because it brings forth, so first of all, I'm not even a huge fan of cream of wheat, but it's my favorite because it makes me remember my childhood and my mom. My mom would make cream of wheat for my brother and I when we were younger. And I remember her being very passionate about it being smooth, while I was very passionate about the bumps and lumps that you would get in it. I loved them, and it was a challenge for her to make it for me because I wanted those in there, but she did that. And I'm going to take the opportunity to use that as a metaphor for what I think I bring to the table here, and it's that willingness to collaborate and to make those sorts of shifts, to recognize what other people value and feed it to them. So there you go.
Well, thank you, Ms. House. I really enjoy having you here.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And next up, we, pulling it up here, have Mackenzie Jones.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council.
Hello.
It's exciting to see you all.
We have, we do have Councilmember Shimoney kicking us off this time.
Hey there, Mackenzie. Good to see you. My question is, give an example of when you felt that people of underrepresented backgrounds were not being treated in a way you were okay with, and what did you do?
Thank you, Councilmember Shimoney. So I recently worked for the City of Sedona as a Sustainability Manager there, and we were in the process of doing a bicycle and pedestrian planning process, and where the residents could map where they wanted to see sidewalks and where they wanted to see bike paths and things like that. And it was a really cool mapping situation, but there was this just giant gap in a certain neighborhood. And so I remember talking to the city planner about it and trying to understand it a little bit more, and it turned out it was the neighborhood where primarily most of the members of the immigrant community live. So I was like, well, do they not want sidewalks? What's going on there? And it turns out there also, there aren't sidewalks there, and people, it's a pretty dangerous driving situation. So I reached out to Northern Arizona Interfaith Council. I had volunteered with them in the past when I worked here. And we put together a grant to engage the immigrant community in Sedona and to work on civic engagement and kind of identify barriers within city planning processes. And we were in the process of kicking off a climate action plan, which we did month one of the pandemic. Turns out it was excellent timing. People really wanted to talk about climate change right then. And so we had to figure out Zoom and how do you do engagement online? But we got this grant to essentially pay community organizers to lead civic academies around climate change, identify issues, work with the community to identify issues. So they identified sidewalks, energy efficiency, transit, bulk trash, all sorts of things. And then we essentially worked to internally change city processes so that we actually had interpretation and translation services. And a bunch of really interesting things spun out of it. We had heard a lot of micro-entrepreneurship was happening during the pandemic, and so we were trying to build relationships between city staff and and other community leaders in the immigrant community. And we ended up building a relationship with Economic Development Director, who partnered up with Local First Arizona to do Fuerza Locale, which ended up being this entrepreneurship program for Spanish-speaking business owners. And also ended up working with the Police Department to address policing issues as well. So it's ended up ballooning into this fantastic city engagement process over the last two years. And now there's actually ongoing city funding dedicated to partnering with NAIC in the long term.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Solis is next.
Thank you for being here, Mackenzie. So elaborate on your understanding of the city manager, city council form of government, and describe your decision-making process within the city manager, city council form of government.
Certainly. Well, I think the folks who went before me have kind of addressed the basics of that, you know, one council member, one vote. I think it distinguishes itself as a model from the strong mayor form of governance, which is that there's, you know, less corruption and more stability when you have a city manager, a professional that is really, you know, has that background in governance and can provide that stability. And then you have representatives of the community who are elected who can really provide their own unique perspective and innovative ideas. As former city staff, I certainly understand that perspective of being a subject matter expert and really feeding into those policy recommendations from the city manager. For me, working in Sedona, I reported directly to the city manager. And so I think a lot of that was relationship building because especially when you are a city staff member that is focusing on something, a really, a narrow piece of the overall puzzle, it's really important to understand the city manager and how they're making those decisions. And then also be able to kind of share your perspective on why your programming is important and how it fits into that puzzle. So to your second part of the question, I think just feeding in all the different perspectives on a topic is really important. And so you get that from city staff, providing their perspective and making recommendations. You're getting it from the city manager, who's already weighing the competing city staff perspectives on a topic. You're getting it from, I'm sure, your next-door neighbor and the people in the grocery store who stop you when you're trying to buy something. I know we all have experienced that before. So you're really, you're pulling in those pieces from all sorts of different directions. And then also from the other folks on council who have different perspectives than you. So I think for me, I try to just weigh the various elements of what I'm hearing and also bring it back to the city council priorities. Especially if I were selected as somebody who was unelected, I would really be leaning into those council priorities that have already been established and trying to weigh my decision-making against that.
Thank you. Then I am next on the list here. How have your policy views changed over time? Give an example when you've changed your mind on a critical and salient issue that could have a substantial impact on our community as a city council member. Why did you change your mind on that issue?
Okay, thank you. I love that question because I think, you know, we all can get kind of rooted in our own perspectives. And it's really important to be able to hear conflicting information and actually evaluate it and change your mind. For me, I grew up in a really conservation-oriented household. My first job in college was working for the Appalachian Mountain Club in one of their back country huts in the White Mountains in New Hampshire. And so I had a very land conservation-oriented perspective. We need to protect land. And then I was hired here to start effectively our open space program for the City of Flagstaff. And so I worked for several years on Picture Canyon, Observatory Mesa, and working with the Open Spaces Commission to sort of weigh all the different elements of how do we define valuable open space. And for me, I had a really big turning point as it relates to affordable housing. So I would say that I've always been supportive, you know, theoretically of affordable housing. But then if there was a development issue in general related to conservation, I would lean more towards conservation. And I've really pulled a 180 on this one. So I think, and, you know, the sunflower conversation is one that we've all, that comes up often, I think, and is something that was, you know, can be a really divisive one for people. For me, it was a remarkable moment to go, you know, I think my first instincts felt something like, well, yeah, it's this beautiful place and we need to protect it, you know, something along those lines. And then also when I dug in on it, I, you know, it became really clear to me that, you know, from a climate justice perspective, that it's on transit. It is on the urban trail. It is in a beautiful space. It is in a great school district. There are all these elements that make it perfect for workforce housing. And so when you evaluate it from an open space perspective, it also, based on the strategic plan that the Open Spaces Commission did in 2015, where they evaluate things based on their ecological value, their cultural resources, their connectivity, things like that, it didn't have as strong open space values as, say, someplace like Picture Canyon or any number of other locations. So for me, that was a really big turning point and really affected how I think about affordable housing going forward. People have to live somewhere.
Thank you, Mackenzie. Next is Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you. Stacy, please start my three-minute timer here. So the City of Flagstaff is aiming for carbon neutrality by 2030. It's a lofty goal, and it's the product of bottom-up, community-driven processes that have demanded the global climate crisis be treated locally like the emergency that it is. We also have another emergency that is being brought to us from the ground up, and this is related to affordable housing. How are these two urgent challenges compatible with each other or at odds? And how would you address both crises simultaneously? And how will you look at the question of Flagstaff's potential big growth over the next couple decades through both of these lenses?
Yeah, thank you. Another great question. I think I definitely believe that they're compatible. And like I said, I don't think that you can address climate change without addressing housing. I think it's central to figuring out a path forward on carbon neutrality. I really enjoyed reading the Tenure Housing Plan. So thank you to Council and also to the Housing Commission and Kara. I think it's an impressive document. And I enjoyed the reference in there that, you know, you don't deal with carbon emissions like it's a snow globe. The, when people move here, they are not going to be someplace else. So if we are creating a community in which people can live a low-impact life and more importantly, a healthy life for them, then that's a net positive. We obviously have to think about things like water, right? That's an ongoing issue here. But I also think that, you know, sometimes we present the two options as single-family houses or the hub, and there's a lot in between there. And that that conversation around the missing middle is really valuable for both housing and for climate. Because when we do duplexes, triplexes, things like that, condos, we are creating the communities that are resilient, that are bikeable, that are walkable, that are a little bit denser, that are affordable. And also when we do building codes that prioritize energy efficiency, we are prioritizing healthy homes for people and homes that are affordable to operate. And my home was built in 1960, and it's terrible. I mean, I think all of us have probably situations like that where we have no insulation or it's, you know, it's really inefficient to operate and expensive. And that's not healthy for anybody. So I think, you know, I definitely think that we can address both of our goals at the same time. There are some tensions in between the two. But certainly, I think that they are, you know, mutually beneficial. And to address the climate change issue, I do believe in climate change. And I believe that, or I should say, I recognize that it's happening, and I recognize that it's human cause. I worked with Sedona to set a 50% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions target by 2030, and I struggled exactly with the question you're asking, which is, what kind of target are we setting? Can we meet this target? And what it came down to was, we are setting a target that recognizes what needs to be done. And that is what has to happen. It is a moral imperative. And so it is technically possible, it is physically impossible to, or technically possible to meet that target. It will be difficult. I was the first person to set off the alarm.
Well, Mackenzie, thank you. Fortunately, that wasn't going to be my follow-up question because I figured it would be kind of softball for you. I would like to know from you, you know, sustainability is rightfully criticized often for its lack of inclusion and the challenges it has for being more inclusive. How are you positioned to make headway there?
Yeah, thank you. I think that's the real central challenge. I know we, sustainability folks definitely have the Tesla-driving stereotypes that we need to beat back. So I would say that for me personally, this has been the main priority of my career, is trying to figure out how do we actually address climate change and create healthy communities that are equitable and just. And I feel like my work speaks to that and that I have prioritized that really clearly in Sedona and also in Flagstaff. I think that that is where we have the most opportunity is that, you know, when presented with an opportunity, I know that you all, when you're dealing with rezoning and you're trying to work with developers, you have to balance, okay, well, do we ask them for, I don't know, a DC fast-charging system? Or do we ask for longer terms on affordable units? Or do we ask for bike resources? I don't know, whatever, any number of things. So that is something where you have to weigh those. And to me, I would generally come out in the thing that benefits the most people and also shifts power. So if we're thinking about, you know, transportation, and it's a question, we only, we have limited resources, and we can either do more EV charging or we can make the bus system work better, I would make the bus system work better because that would solve a problem for more people while also reducing emissions and also help people who are income strapped, you know, address issues in a different way and more affordably live their lives.
Fabulous. I didn't hear her use the word arugula once there.
What was the word?
Arugula.
Arugula is delicious, but...
Irrelevant. Thank you very much. I appreciate your responses.
Thank you. Next, Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. Flagstaff has a pilot alternative response program to serve as an alternative to traditional police responses to 911 calls. Do you believe that police funding should be reduced to fully implement this program? And then secondly, how would you approach the issue of public safety in general?
Certainly. And first of all, kudos for getting this program off the ground. It's been so exciting to watch from afar. And I just have a lot of respect for the folks at Teros, and it's been really interesting to see it rolled out. So that is exciting. I think I share the views of the people before me, which is that I think at any given time, one, you know, when you look at the alternative response model, I would say that the Police Department, it'd be interesting to see where those gaps are. Because I know this is what the city did to begin with, is how many of our calls are going towards calls that could have been addressed by somebody else and in a different way, or require mental health resources, or, you know, any number of things like that. And so I think continuing to evaluate that gap between which calls are responded to and which way and how the funding is going with that, without knowing more, it would be hard to understand. I think that when you value a program like this, it is bundled in with all of our other work that is related to public safety. And you have to look at that whole picture and see, okay, well, do we need more resources in general, or are there resources that could shift? And that, I don't think I actually have enough information to speak to that. From a policing perspective, I worked with the police here as a city staffer on a number of different things, everything from open space to the livestock animal keeping code, which is a lot of fun. But, and in Sedona, I, you know, had a really good relationship with the police chief and learned a lot from him on different issues. I think that one of the things that we worked on was when we heard things from the immigrant community about how they didn't feel safe in their neighborhoods or the different issues that they were running into, that just essentially brought up the idea that we need to have more conversations, right? So we held a lot of meetings between the police chief and community members from the immigrant community. And I think that really is where my perspective would be grounded in. I do know that NAIC has continued to facilitate those sort of conversations here in Flagstaff over the years and that there's a lot of great groundwork and relationships between the Police Department and organizers already. So I would probably lean into that.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you for being here. Please describe your decision-making process when potentially conflicting priorities and/or values are involved. And if you want to throw in an example that maybe you haven't talked about yet, that would be great.
Thank you. So I think that, you know, in my experience in Sedona, I was tasked with starting the sustainability program. And I remember getting there, and they were really enthusiastic and supportive of it but weren't maybe entirely sure about what this was going to look like either. So it was a really interesting situation where it could look like any number of things that I came up with, which is a fantastic thing to be presented with. If you're somebody who really loves working on climate, loves working on sustainability, it's great to go, okay, this can look like anything I come up with. It's also terrifying because that means you're just limited by your own ability to do things, right? So for me, having to weigh those priorities and weigh what I should invest my energy in as a team of one was really difficult. And at the time, you know, I think I went to the Urban Sustainability Directors Network, had a list of high-impact priorities that if cities were working on climate change, these are the things you should focus on. So that is what I used as my guidepost. But at any time, I mean, you have to weigh, should we be investing more in this versus that? So I think that always happens. For me, it's a question of weighing, almost having a matrix of going, okay, well, does this, if carbon neutrality is the goal, how, dealing with the housing crisis is the goal, does this increase, you know, units of housing for people? Does this reduce greenhouse gas emissions? Does it, you know, address historic power inequities in different ways? And trying to weigh those different pieces against each other. So for me, I think that's how I would go, I mean, how I would approach it. I think I also, as a general rule, just try to learn from the other people around me and seek different input on things to reevaluate and decide, well, what's the right path forward?
Thank you. All right. What is your favorite breakfast cereal and why?
So I was going to try to come up with something that I could like tie back to something that was a real answer, and I got nothing. So, one, as an adult, I do not eat breakfast cereal, unless we're counting, you know, oatmeal, which you made a very compelling case for oatmeal. I, because I watched too much of those Instagram or TikTok-y videos about, you know, overnight baked oats, have now become somebody in the last few months where I like make them in the blender and you can turn them into magical things. So I recommend Googling that. But I would also say that as a child, I was raised in like a shredded wheat family. So like people that, we weren't allowed to have like good cereal. We were just allowed to have healthy cereal. And so my siblings and I, like, all formed alliances with friends who had unhealthy cereal families and like Nintendo and stuff. And so Cinnamon Toast Crunch, this is essentially it. Is that I, we were allowed to get it at the end of each school year. We were allowed to pick out one sugar cereal. And I, my brother and I always picked Cinnamon Toast Crunch, which is essentially a dessert. Oh, yeah. No, it's actually apparently the least, I Googled it because I was like, how do I pull this back together? Nothing. It is the least healthy cereal you could eat, apparently. So it has that going for it.
Well, for the record, my grandfather ate cinnamon toast crunch every morning and lived till 93.
Ooh, see?
So just...
You're selling me on it. I'm going to start buying it again.
I'm going to throw in some counterfactuals out there. Got to throw some counterfactuals out there. Thank you, Mackenzie.
Thank you.
Let's have the one, are you good with one more? Then we can move forward. Let's take a five-minute break real quick.
Hard five.
A hard five minutes, though. So, and then, yeah, and then we'll be right back. So, hard five. 4:30. We are right back at it, and next individual to come up is Samantha Stone.
I'm going to try it this way. Let me know if you need me to speak louder, or if I turn the microphone off accidentally.
You're good. All right. Well, I get the privilege of asking the first question here this go-round, and that is, how have your policy views changed over time? Give an example when you have changed your mind on a critical and salient issue that could have a substantial impact on our community as a city council member. Why did you change your mind on that issue?
So, as with all of these questions, I have to say, the prior candidates are amazing, and oftentimes, I just wanted to say ditto. So, I'm going to echo a lot of what they said, but I think that specifically on this issue, what I have learned working in policy is that, similar to what other candidates have said, is the more that I know, the less I know, if that makes sense, or the more that I realize I don't know. I think one of the things that really comes to mind here is, on an overall basis, that good intentions are not enough, and that policies have actual implications. And so, while it's important to have folks with good intentions in these positions, it's also important to understand the potential implications of policy, which is very different than what I thought when I started getting into politics, right? I thought as long as you had a good heart, things were going to be okay. I think it's really important to think things out a little bit further at this point. A specific example would be, you know, growing up, I went to school here in Flagstaff, and we would do, like, Plant a Tree Day at school, right? And then you have all these conversations about deforestation and things like that. And so, I think that I always felt like more trees were better, right? And then, when I started working in Western Water Policy, and started working with the folks that are responsible for healthy forest management here in town, learning that that is not true here, right? In order for us to have a healthy water table, healthy forests, we have to cut down trees. And that was really kind of mind-altering to me, you know? It just, it shook my understanding as a child of, we should all be planting trees all the time, right? And I think that that's a good example of what you're asking about, Mayor Daisy.
Thank you. With that, it's Councilmember Schmone.
Hi, Sam. Good to see you. Give an example of when you felt that people of underrepresented backgrounds were not being treated in the way you were okay with, and what did you do?
I giggled a little bit when I read this, too. I got into politics, right? So, I started working in community organizing with immigrant justice organizations here in town in 2009, 2010, right before SB 1070 came about, right? And something that I realized at that point was that, with my background, I was afforded access to spaces that a lot of the folks in that community did not have. So, I think, similar to what Ms. House was saying, I felt like it was important to use my level of privilege to amplify those voices, not necessarily to speak for the voiceless, but to amplify them, right? And I think that my policy career has very much been that. I have worked with the tribes here in northern Arizona, particularly on water issues, which is huge, as we all know. And I, when I was working for the United States Senate, one of the reasons I decided to take that job was because it afforded me the opportunity to come back to Flagstaff and really focus on the northern Arizona communities, which are so near and dear to my heart, and oftentimes, as you all know, really get left out of the decision-making process at both the state and federal levels. So, I'd say my entire career in politics has essentially been based off of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Sweet.
Thank you, and thank you for being here. Please describe your decision-making process when potentially conflicting priorities and/or values are involved, and if you want to give an example, that would be great.
Absolutely. I've got to say, I think I giggled at kind of all of these. With that one, I have ADHD and anxiety, so that's kind of every decision that I make, right? Like, oh, and there's this, and this, and this, and this, and this. But, along with that, is the ADHD superpower of hyper-focus that allows me, especially in the policy arena, to look at all the different sides of an issue and to research the heck out of them in a short period of time. And so, that is a lot of it, you know, sleepless nights, Googling every potential aspect, and then making mind maps and things like that. That's a lot of my decision-making process. I also think, though, that, again, as a lot of the prior candidates mentioned, a lot of the time, when something seems, or when two issues seem on their face to be conflicting, you can find intersecting areas of ways to work together on those issues, right? I think that a lot of great examples of that have been given already. I think that, again, I was giggling to myself back there. I did not grow up with a conservation background. I grew up in a house full of libertarians, right? Small business-owning libertarians, and my dad's a builder. And so, when I was younger, and we moved to Flagstaff, particularly for him to build multifamily housing, he was using energy-efficient building methods, not because he was trying to use energy-efficient building methods, because they were cheaper, right? And so, in my experience, there's so much overlap, especially in those types of areas, that you can move forward on issues that oftentimes, like I said, seem at face value to be conflicting.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. No, I probably could say it off the cuff, but the glasses will help a lot. Okay, it says here, "Flagstaff has a pilot alternative response program to serve as an alternative to traditional police responses to 911 calls. Do you believe that police funding should be reduced to fully implement this program? And then, secondly, how would you approach the issue of public safety in general?"
So, again, I feel like this is a really complicated answer, a complicated question with a complicated answer. But I want to start out by really commending this council on getting moving on that alternative response model. I am so excited about that pilot program. I am so excited to see where it goes, very excited for the data that's going to come out with, of the pilot, and potentially exploring different funding streams based on that data from the pilot program to see how we can increase funding for the city of Flagstaff, right? I, you know, part of my background is as a grant writer, and I think that there's always different ways of finding funding. With that said, I think there's a couple of other aspects as well. I think that it's very important to me that we think of public safety a bit more broadly, not just as policing, but as some of the other candidates have mentioned, as, you know, mental health resources and substance abuse resources. And additionally, I think that affordable housing is public safety, and I think that access to food is public safety, right? I think that we have to approach that issue from a variety of standpoints in order to make sure that we are both responding appropriately and also preventing what we can prevent. I think that's very important. And then, also, what else was I going to say about that? Oh, and then also, you know, libertarian dad, small business owner, like, I think that government programs oftentimes can be evaluated, right? And so, I wouldn't say, like, I don't know, I haven't looked at the budget, and I do not have expertise in the ways to manage a police department. And I think we've got folks back in the back that know quite a bit more about that than I do, right? And I would think that it is very important for everyone to collaborate with every area of city government to see if things are being run as efficiently as possible, and if it would make sense to shift funding.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you. Here we are again. Okay, so, I'm going to go through these. I just think it's best to do it equally for everybody. The city of Flagstaff is aiming for carbon neutrality by 2030. We know this is a lofty goal, but it's the product of a bottom-up, community-driven process, and, you know, works under the determination that global climate crisis is an emergency and needs to be treated locally. Council has also recognized another locally-driven process and crisis in terms of affordable housing. So, these are two urgent challenges. Do you think they're compatible with each other, or at odds? How will you address both simultaneously? And really, you know, how will you look at the question of Flagstaff's potential explosive growth over the next couple decades through these different lenses?
Absolutely. I think this is a great question that I think about a lot as a mom, you know? Long-term sustainability is very important to me, but also, I'm trying to buy a house here in Flagstaff. It's hard, right? It's difficult on a nonprofit salary to buy a house in Flagstaff. I think that, again, as other candidates have said, growth is inevitable, right? Development is inevitable. And I think that rather it being a question of whether or not these things are compatible, it's a question of, how are we going to make sure that they're compatible? Because we have to. It's not an option, right? Climate change is real. Development is real. We have to make those things coexist so that our wonderful little town can continue existing, right? I think that, actually, so I'm a huge book nerd. My dream in life is to have a bookstore, be a librarian, right? And there's this book out right now. It's called Grade Green, and it's been sitting on my nightstand waiting for me to read it, specifically on this issue, about how we can use affordable housing development to tackle issues of justice and equity as well as climate change. I think that something that we need to talk about more often is potentially how expensive utilities are, the ability of things like renewable energy to lower utility costs, the way that that should be brought into affordable housing development, things like that. I think there's also some cities that are similar to Flagstaff that are doing really interesting things. I know Charlottesville, Virginia, has done some interesting stuff on this, on this topic. I think it's always great to look towards other folks that are doing things. And then also, I think that you all, like I said, have done a great job of laying the groundwork here, and you've got a really solid city staff that does a great job of pulling these things together. We've got fantastic folks on commissions that are also bringing this information together. And so, I think, not to jump the gun, but totally believe in climate change, 100% think it's possible, and I think that if anybody can do it, it's Flagstaff.
Thank you. So, I don't know if you noticed, I like to use my follow-up question. I think it's a good opportunity to give you more time to talk, actually. So, thank you for saying you believe in climate change. The question had entered my mind, given your libertarian upbringing, and I know you were a staff person for Senator McSally for a while, too. Do you think that we should be spending local money to tackle a global problem?
100%, absolutely. I think that, I hear what you're saying, and I know that my background is a bit misleading. My, some of the folks on council have interacted with me outside of my professional career, you know, and I think have a better understanding of my personal politics. But again, I would say that the libertarianism and the working for Senator McSally are misleading. I think that, I don't really, I think that the way that I view government is as a resource for the people, right? And every different level of government should be a resource to the people. And I think that one of the things that I have really invested my time in throughout my career in politics is finding out how to make sure that we can make that reality, right? So, I really appreciated Senator McSally's office kind of coming to me and offering me the position, because our politics are so different, you know? And I think that one of the reasons that the office did that is because I've built a reputation for myself in Washington, D.C., as being someone who builds relationships and is able to work with folks who have very different ideals than I do, to build coalitions in order to work towards these goals that we've been talking about, right? So, yes, that was the roundabout way of saying 100%, absolutely, I do.
Great. Fabulous answer. Thank you. A great example of why we should be allowed to ask some follow-up questions. I think it creates some interesting opportunities for dialogue. And just to be clear for the record, I don't, I don't think it's in any way whatsoever a strike against you that you work for one senator's office or another's. I think it's a great public service, and I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Solis.
Thank you for being here, Samantha. Elaborate on your understanding of the city manager, city council form of government, and describe your decision-making process within the city manager, city council form of government.
Thank you. So, I think, again, I feel like the prior candidates did a really great job of describing kind of the basics and the facts of that structure, right? The city manager who runs things on a day-to-day basis, and the council who is responsible for dictating priorities and giving direction to the city manager and city staff. I think that what I would really like to lean into here is, you know, my personal experience with the city manager and Flagstaff city staff, especially throughout COVID, right? I had the opportunity to be working with the Senate when COVID hit, and then throughout 2020, which was a really great opportunity, and really got to work with the folks here in Flagstaff on a pretty regular basis. Coral and I were texting almost daily, trying to work through things here. And I was blown away by how effective and efficient the city staff is. And so, I think that, that's all to say that my decision-making process is, I believe, would largely be to really appreciate and listen to the city manager and city staff on, from all of the work that they've done on these various issues. With that said, I think that it is the responsibility of the council to listen to constituents, as prior candidates have said, and develop those priorities and those directions based on what constituents are saying. I also think that on a personal level, it is exceptionally important to me to seek out the voices that are not being heard within the constituents. So, I think that my decision-making process would be a balance of working with constituents who oftentimes may be, you know, silenced, and also working with the city manager and the city staff to make sure that those goals are being accomplished.
Of course.
Appreciate it. You know, pretty much everyone has an understanding of the city council, city manager form of govern, and discuss your, describe your decision-making process, and you've been, you know, you present the experience of policy. What about budget development within the realm of the city manager, city council form of government?
Man, budget is so interesting to me. Actually, initially, when I was working through my bachelor's degree, I was pursuing randomly, my dad would just die that I'm saying this, but I was pursuing an economics degree, which was surprising to him, right? I was never great personally with money. But, economics, for whatever reason, makes a lot of sense to me. Big, big-picture things make a lot more sense to me. And then also, I have, like I mentioned, I have a background in both grant writing and grant management. A huge part of that is managing budgets, right? Oftentimes, for very complex programs. I think that, again, when it comes to, and I hope that I'm speaking to what you're asking, let me know if I'm not, but I think, again, when it comes to this type of situation with the council, city manager, form of government, again, my understanding is that city staff and the city manager bring options to council, and then work with council to revise those options. options. And again, I think that it's very important that city council be aware of constituent priorities and making sure to, to guard those and represent them well, and make sure that the budget does represent those priorities, but also to rely heavily on the city manager and city staff to figure out the nitty-gritty, the details of how to make that happen.
Thank you. And what is your favorite breakfast cereal and why?
So with this one, I was so glad we got a little bathroom break right before we went because we talked about cereal, and I'd been back there drinking iced tea. And I was like, all I'm going to be able to think about the whole time is that I have to reuse the bathroom, and I love cereal. So I'm glad we took that little break. So I have some weird dietary allergy stuff, and wasn't able to eat cereal for a very, very long time, and have just recently been able to start eating cereal again, and I'm really excited about it. So I eat cereal almost every day. My favorite right now is Honey Nut Cheerios, but I like to put more honey on it. And then sliced bananas on top, but the bananas have to be cold, you know? And like whole milk with it. But then also, my like go-to all-time favorite probably is Lucky Charms. And similar to the wonderful applicant before me, I really wanted to tie this into something deeper, but really, I just like Lucky Charms, you know?
Right on. Thank you, Samantha.
Thank you.
And last but not least, Mr. Joe Washington. Thank you for being with us. And I think the individual kicking us off is Councilmember Aslan.
Great. I just noticed that, turning the page here. All right, let's get this out of the way. So, Joe, you're, thank you for being here. Thank you for stepping forward in the spirit of public service. Really appreciate it. So you've probably been following, we're, we're aiming for carbon neutrality by 2030. It's a lofty goal. It's the product of a bottom-up, community-driven process, which recognizes the global emergency of climate change and is demanding local action. Council has also been responding to a local process recognizing housing as a grave emergency, affordable housing issues. Are these two urgent challenges compatible with each other, or are they at odds? How would you address both simultaneously? And really, the point of this question for me is looking at Flagstaff's mid-to-long-term growth over the next couple decades, and how, how do you see growth and how do you tackle the challenges of growth with, with these two, through these two lenses?
Thank you. Yes, I think that the, the two goals are definitely compatible, and I think that they are things that, things, we're seeing, for example, climate change with the, with the tunnel fire. We're seeing things that are, are very real. I mean, it's, and some people don't see that it's, that it's real, but, but it is. And, and it's something that has to be dealt with, and affordable housing also is a, is extremely important. It's, it's, there are, there are a lot of people that feel that they can't stay in Flagstaff because of the price of housing. And so they're, they're definitely important as well as, a lot of times, they, they are parallel. They, they don't necessarily, there's no direct clash in, in many cases between the two goals. But, so they are, they're, most often, I think, they are, they are compatible in terms of like using solar energy on, with, with housing and so on like that. It, it helps. With regard to growth, it has to be managed. It's, it's inevitable. I've seen the growth between the time I got here in 1976 to, to today, and it's been an extreme amount of growth in, in Flagstaff. And there's, there's really no stopping it. It's, and it's, it's going to happen. Flagstaff is a wonderful place to be, a wonderful place to live, and we'll have growth here. And we look to things like infill and looking at how to do things to preserve the, the beauty of Flagstaff. When I was on the city council, we adopted a land use ordinance that had the preservation of vegetation and, and was anti-clearcutting and so on like that. All of those things have to be taken into consideration when we, we have this growth, as we manage this growth, which is, which is absolutely inevitable.
Thank you, Joe. So you look at all of this stuff through another lens, and that is, as a tribal member and an Indigenous person, I was wondering if you would be willing to take the opportunity to speak for a moment about sustainability through that lived experience? And if you could share with us some of the strengths and unique perspectives that you bring to sustainability and our growth challenges and our housing affordability challenges through those lenses?
Yes. Indigenous people consider ourselves to be part of the environment, and that the environment, both flora as well as fauna, are, are part of our, like our relations. And there is a belief in, and a gratitude towards the environment in sustaining us for food and so on like that, and providing medicine such as herbs and, and plants that are used to heal certain diseases. And there is, like in, in hunting, hunting deer, for example, there was always, every part of the animal was used. The sinew could be used for bowstrings and, and different things like that. So there is a, a very organic feeling between Indigenous people and the environment. And we have a duty, these are living entities and, and, and our relatives. And so, so we have a kind of a religious moral obligation to preserving the environment. And so it is something that's very important to us. And so we do feel that there, that Mother Earth has to be protected and appreciated and, and that we guard and are thankful for, for the environment.
Thank you. Who's next up here? Vice Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you for being here. Please describe your decision-making process when potentially conflicting priorities and our values are involved, and feel free to give an exact example for me.
I, although like being a judge is different from being a council member, I learned a lot of things from classes that I took at the National Judicial College. And one of the, one of the things that they taught us was to have a sentencing philosophy. And I think that that idea, that concept is important in choosing priorities. For example, if you have a philosophy about priorities, about what is important and so on like that, that'll help you guide, that will guide you through the maze of finding which priorities are important and, and how to weigh them. That sentencing philosophy as a judge was to be fair to everyone. And for one of the things I had kind of, one of a conservative kind of idea, is that I felt that if anyone actually harmed, hurt someone, that I was going to impose some amount of jail time. And so that's a philosophy that, that if anyone appeared before me and that they had seriously harmed someone, they would very likely, well, oh, surely, be, be sentenced to some amount of jail time. And that philosophy can work with things like, again, the environment, about the, the role of the environment and the importance of it, as well as, you know, what is happening with, with climate change and the real effects that we're seeing here. So those philosophies, those, those decided perspectives, I think are important, and to have a philosophy about how to deal with priorities and how to choose between them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is me here. How have your policy views changed over time? Give an example when you have changed your mind on a critical and salient issue that could have a substantial impact on our community as a city council member. Why did you change your mind on that issue?
Actually, my, my viewpoints have not really changed much over time. There are things that, there's kind of the idea that as people get older, for example, they're going to be opposed to bond elections and, and so on like that. That doesn't happen with me. I, I see things, a need for certain things, and I, I believe, you know, I'm supportive of things like bond elections and so on like that. So getting older didn't have that kind of effect on me. There are, in, in terms of my philosophy, my, my father worked for the Employment Assistance for the BIA, but he was also a minister, a lay minister in the church. And my mother was very traditional, having traditional beliefs and non-Christian beliefs. And so I think early in their marriage, they might have had some friction, but as they, as the longer they stayed married, they became more close to each other in, in those views. So that my mother was more accepting of, of church, and my father was more accepting of traditional values and, and so on like that. And that kind of lets me, makes me more appreciative of other people's viewpoints and of their, their strongly-held beliefs. And there are ways to harmonize them, and my parents did it, and there are ways to harmonize those kinds of things. So my beliefs have not really changed over the years. There, there's another thing that conservatives, or it's, it's a kind of a, a thing, it was a saying that if you're not a socialist when you're in your twenties, then you have no heart. If you're still a socialist in your forties, then you have no brain, something like that. And, but those ideas are, again, not my, my perspective, is, is to, to harmonize kinds of things, harmonize beliefs. And, and my beliefs really haven't changed in, in all these years.
Thank you. Councilmember Shumani.
Thank you, Mayor, and hi, Joe. I have the, the privilege of, of serving with Joe, who is a co-chair of our Indigenous Commission. So thank you for your service, and thank you again for stepping up. Joe, my question is, give an example of when you felt that people of underrepresented backgrounds were not being treated in a way you were okay with, and what did you do?
I am the chair of a, a community group called the Indigenous Circle of Flagstaff. And we often hear cases where Indigenous people have been discriminated against, and it's our role, and it's my role, to speak truth to power, to basically, these individuals are afraid of being slapped down again if they bring things up to people in power. They're worried about being batted down. And it's my job and the job of our organization to make sure that their voices are heard, that they are, are heard. And sometimes people are skeptical about what they are saying. From personal belief, I, I am a member of an underrepresented group, and I would, you would think that with my education and my income, I would be somehow invulnerable to racism, but it's not true. I have experienced racism in my own life. My wife and I went to a restaurant one time, and it was a newly-opened restaurant. And we walked in, and there were people eating there, and we, we asked for a table, and they said, "We're closed." They obviously didn't want us there. And the, you know, I could have insisted on being served and so on like that, and my wife is very outspoken. She could have done that, too. But I don't, I, I didn't particularly want to have dinner with members of the Ku Klux Klan. And so I, we just left and had nothing more to do with that restaurant. And there is, again, people don't know that it's very real, that racism is very real, discrimination is very real. And I think it's my job to stand up for people who have experienced it and very boldly point it out and, and to do something about it.
Councilmember Shumani.
I do have a follow-up. Spirit of Councilmember Aslan's follow-ups. I appreciate that response tremendously, and I'm just curious, with your prior history here at the city of Flagstaff, what would you say are some of those bigger, underlying concerns that, through that lens of racism, that the city and we need to hear and, and champion moving forward?
Just the, to, to look at, and I, I think that there, I think that things are improving with, there was a time when the city of Flagstaff discriminated against Native Americans in enforcement of the open container law, particularly around the time of the Powwaw, that individuals, Native Americans who were drinking from an open container would be actually arrested, thrown in jail. And people who were white would not be arrested and thrown in jail, doing the same thing, drinking from a can of beer, and so on like that. I, and it's just basically some of those things like that, that, that have, have happened that needs to be watched, but I, but I think like, we, we are very vocal about, the Indigenous Circle of Flagstaff has had forums, and we've mentioned things like this and specific, specific things. The city manager attended some of our forums, and we were very glad to see that. And so we, we felt that we were getting to the people who, who needed to know about it. So, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you. Staff has, excuse me, excuse me. Flagstaff has a pilot alternative response program to serve as an alternative to traditional police responses to 911 calls. Do you believe that police funding should be reduced to fully implement this program? And then secondly, how would you approach the issue of public safety in general?
Possibly reduced, but only if the chief of police agreed with it. And I, and I think that that is even a possibility. I wanted to tell you that Chief Musselman has been the greatest supporter of the alternate response model, and that it does have some very strong effects in, in terms of freeing up police to actually do things that involve law enforcement instead of dealing with a mental health problem. And I, I really appreciate that. And so I say, it, it is even, I, I would think that it was a possibility that Chief Musselman might say, "Yeah, it would be okay for us to take a little cut in, in the police budget in order to do some of those things," because he's a great supporter of the alternate response model. And public safety in general, I, I think that that is, I, I think that is important. I, I was a public defender for 20 years, and sometimes public defenders and the police don't get along, but I did. I was, I was laid off in, at the, in the year that COVID started. And the two first people that came into, came into my office to sympathize with me was the chief of police and a, a police sergeant. And I, I had developed a very good relationship with the police. They understand the role of public defenders and, and of making sure people's rights are followed and so on like that. So I had excellent relationships with police officers. And I, but like I said, there is a possibility that, that in speaking with the chief, that there, there might be, you know, some agreement for reduction of funds. But if might be, you know, some agreement for a reduction of funds. But if not, then we're still looking at finding other ways to, to deal with that, because I think it's a very good program. It's a needed program, and it is, is something useful.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosales.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for being here, Joe. So I guess I'm gonna customize this question, because you served on council before. Based on your experience, elaborate on your understanding of the city manager, city council form of government, and describe your decision-making process within the city manager, city council form of government.
I was a political science major in college. And if that question was on a political science quiz, the answer would have to do with a discussion between the difference between a council management, manager form of government and a strong mayor form of government. And, but I don't think that's the reason why you're asking that question. I think that it's important for a council member to know their role in, in the process. And it's important to know that a council member only has authority in a city council meeting with a vote. That council member is a policymaker and is only involved in policy. A council member does not get involved in administration. And it's wrong, for example, for a council member to call up a member of the city employee and say, "I'm really upset that the, my, the road, my, the street beside, in front of my house has not been plowed, and I really want you to do something about that." That's absolutely wrong. And so the, a council member must know that they're, know their position, and their position is to make decisions in conjunction with fellow council members as a policymaker, as a policymaker, and not get involved in administration.
Second part of my question is, describe your decision-making process within...
Okay. And that is within the council. Another kind of Indigenous thought is to try to reach consensus. In the Indigenous Circle of Flagstaff, we try to make decisions in, with very, if one person has some, some concerns and so on like that, we try to talk it out and try to figure out what we need to do to reach a consensus decision, a unanimous decision if we can. And so my personal decision-making process is to look for that. If someone seems to have concerns, to draw that out so that we know what every aspect of, of the issue is. And so it's, and to give and take. There have been times in order to reach that decision, I would have to forego a position that I had earlier taken. And so we try to reach consensus. We try to listen to every voice and take from every voice and try to work that, work that through. And so my decision-making would be to, to try to reach consensus on issues.
Thank you. With that, I need to know about your cereal favorites here.
Well, it's kind of a tie between Cheerios and shredded wheat. But I don't want to seem like I can't make up my mind, make a decision. So I'll say shredded wheat. And I think it's healthy and I like to, I like the taste, and I use stevia on it instead of sugar so I don't overdo the sugar.
That was the right choice of the two, because mine was frosted mini wheats. So, yeah. Thank you, Joe. I appreciate it. With that, I wanted to see, do we have any public participants online or any cards?
No, Mayor, we do not.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. With that, I am welcome to take a little break for us to kind of process, write down some thoughts. I know we have a scheduled executive session, but that will take a vote to make happen. I personally would like to be able to discuss some of the candidates in an open forum, or just general thoughts, or at the very least, before we would go into e-session, just each of us kind of state some of the criteria, things that we're thinking about in general, not a specific candidate. I don't want to, you know, if that's not the route you all want to go for, speaking about specific candidates. But I think it's really important for people to understand our decision-making process through this, especially when we're asking everyone else to tell us about their decision-making process. Sterling.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Understanding that that is the case, I wanted to just speak briefly to it before we get out of the work session here. Again, understanding that there may be a desire by yourself and perhaps even another member of council or two, I don't know how many, and not to go into executive session for discussion of the applicants. The process for that, just with open meeting law in consideration here, would be first to adjourn this special work session. We take the break you mentioned, and then call the special meeting to order. You would call for a motion to recess into executive session as is posted. If that motion and second and vote occur and succeed, we go into executive session to discuss the vacancy applicants. However, if the motion, second and vote occur and it fails, then essentially, to make sure the council is of a majority, you would, you would need to call for a motion to proceed with the discussion of the council vacancy applicants in open meeting. And if that motion passes, you go ahead and proceed with the discussion in open. If it doesn't pass, then my recommendation would be that you adjourn the meeting and indicate that the council would come back to it at another meeting to be scheduled later. The same goes for, if no motion is made at all to recess into executive session, you could entertain a motion to have the discussion in open. And of course, if that succeeds, you go ahead and proceed in open. If it doesn't, again, adjourn and just mention that we'll come back to it at a meeting to be scheduled later. I hope that's helpful. I know it's a lot of information, but that would be the best way to proceed, to make sure that we're in compliance with open meeting law and that the will of the council is being heard.
Thank you, Sterling. Always appreciate you keeping us straight here. So for that deliberation, just to confirm, we will need to adjourn this session before we start the executive session. All right. Councilmember Rosales?
Well, while we're still here in public session, I would just state for the record that I, I welcome the opportunity to talk generally about what I'm looking for in these candidates. I'm looking forward to the opportunity to stating that, very pleased with all six of these candidates and the interviews we had today. I really do agree with Mr., with former councilmember Al White, that we can't go wrong here this afternoon. And I just want to state that publicly. I do think it's important that we be able to speak freely amongst ourselves as we deliberate about a personnel matter. And if, we have at our disposal the executive session process for that, and I strongly recommend that we utilize that process for our final deliberations on this. I'm guessing, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we're going to try to come to a final consensus this evening, correct?
Potentially, depending on...
Depend, yeah. I guess it all depends on what happens. But I really do think it's important that we have, that we be afforded the luxury of being able to deliberate in private a little bit when it, when it comes to the final, rising of a final candidate to consensus. But that being said, I don't think this is going to be a very contentious process. I'm very encouraged by what's happened here today. I have shared a lot of the frustrations that other candidates and other folks have mentioned over the past few weeks, that it's, it's very awkward and unfortunate that we only have two candidates stepping forward through the official process for these four, these four spots. I, you know, one could say that it makes the path easy for me for a second term. And while that is ostensibly true, it's not satisfying. And it's not, it's not the way the process is supposed to work. It's not my fault. And I share the frustration that goes into that. And I think the voters of Flagstaff deserve a better process and deserve to be able to make choices. So I just want to say all that. But I'm more encouraged after going through this process. And for those of you who don't make the final cut, and for those that aren't here today but were here on Monday, I absolutely encourage you all to go through the traditional process of running for one of these seats by the traditional candidate election process. I think you would all make wonderful candidates. And I think you would all make wonderful representatives for the city of Flagstaff.
Thank you, Councilmember Rosales. Councilmember Shemani.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, so I'm trying to understand, so are we, are we voicing our general comments now, or are we doing that after the break?
I was going to take a 10-minute break just to give us a breather and collect our thoughts. And I would like to, if we're not, you know, if we are planning to go into executive session, I'll be honest, I don't think we should. That's how I'll be voting, I think. At this point, we have great candidates, and honestly, we're trying to prioritize a lot of great things to tell, to talk about six people about, and, which is going to be a difficult conversation regardless. But I do feel that if we are not going to be doing that at this dais in front of the video camera, that the public should know what is part of our individual decision-making process as we start looking at the applicants. What are the things that come up in our thoughts? So that way, the public knows our decision-making process before we would go to executive session. So does that...
It does. So, Mayor, you're hoping the default will be that we'll have that conversation publicly, but if there is a motion and a majority to go into executive session, we'll do so, correct?
Yes. Regardless, I'd like to take a 10-minute break. Then when we come back, we can all around the table just kind of explain, not, you know, necessarily individual candidates, but how we're thinking about the situation. So the public knows before we would move on to adjourning this meeting and then going to the executive session motion afterward. Vice Mayor.
Can I request 15 minutes? I need to eat dinner, and I think this is going to be my chance.
I'm down with that. So, well, it's 5:30, whoop, just turned 5:35, so we'll be back here at 5:50. And we'll, yeah, go from there. So, thank you. All right. Okay. Well, we have discussed the vacancy interviews, take some notes and so forth. And just to make sure we don't have any public participation, participants at this time online.
That is correct, Mayor.
All righty. Sounds good. Well, with that, before we adjourn, I would like to just kind of go around the table and see kind of, yeah, what our decision-making process is, things that we've been considering over time. And happy to have anyone jump in to be the front person on that, if you'd like. And these can just be general, very general things. So, Vice Mayor.
Again, thank you all for being here. We can't go wrong. So in my thinking of how, what's important to me and how I want to deliberate with myself, it really comes to, you each have something to bring to the table, a lot of things to bring to the table. And so perhaps weighing what each of those things are. It does appear you all are very collaborative, which I appreciate. And I see you working well with us, all of you. So I've been going back and forth, and I think for me personally, it's just narrowing down what you, what special thing each of you can bring to council, and what is it, as we as a council, feel we need the most at the, at the time. So I guess that's my initial thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I'll go.
Councilmember Rosales?
Thank you. So I want to just echo what I said before. I think, I agree, we can't go wrong. I think any of you who don't fall into this position should fight for it by running for council. I think you would be doing this, the city a great service. And I look forward to seeing all of you out there on the campaign trail someday. I am looking for some specific things. And I think we will get that with any of you. I do want to reiterate that I think it's, I love that we're doing this, and I think we should share as much as we possibly can and feel comfortable sharing right now. I do think it is in service to transparency, and it's an important part of this process. I do think at the end of the day, that it's, at some point, we, we cross the line to, nobody wants to see the sausage being made. As, you know, and there's going to come a moment where we have to grapple with some, some conflicting positive viewpoints. And I want us to come out of that process with a consensus candidate, someone that we're all very excited about. And we need to be able to speak passionately and freely about some of those positives and negatives up in the executive chamber, so that we can get, at the end of the day, past that to a place where we are all very excited and all very behind the candidate who is going to come and sit at this table with us. So I do think that's an important both and. And I'd really like us to seriously consider being able to have that conversation openly and with the full flexibility that any governing board would want when choosing personnel. So, but be that as it may, I see that Joe's not here anymore. I do want to state explicitly that I think it's unfortunate that the Flagstaff City Council does not have Indigenous representation on the council. I think that's a systemic weakness that exists and needs to be addressed long-term. It's an American democracy systemic weakness. And I don't know what that conversation looks like in terms of getting out in front of it. But there have been times when we've had that representation on council. We don't have it now. We should. So that factors heavily into my thinking. Joe has stepped forward in service to the community to provide himself, to provide us with, with that characteristic. It's not the only characteristic to consider. I do like that he and Al bring experience to the table. It's important, I, it factors heavily for me that this is only a seven-month appointment. We really do need someone who can hit the ground running. I think the others of you who don't have that experience should go through the traditional process of running for council, get on council, be afforded that rookie status of being able to learn and grow on your feet. Here we have, it's just too short of time to learn all the ins and outs. You know, I was a Peace Corps volunteer, and those, those stints are two years at minimum. My, my wife and I served for three years in a hunter in Cloud Forest. And you don't get anything done that first year. It's simply learning the language, learning the culture, making relationships, creating networks, building trust, and learning the rules. And, yeah, I think there's a certain metaphorical significance to that here. This is a role that takes some getting used to, and it can be overwhelming. And there's, there's external things that come at you, too, that, that will surprise you along the way. Does that disqualify any of the other four of you from tackling this role? No, it doesn't. So I'm very eager to have that conversation about where do we balance those factors. I also think it's important to have neighborhood representation. Kara, I was incredibly impressed with your, with your interview. I think it's very refreshing that we, we have somebody from the neighborhoods here. If, if, if we have other neighborhood representation, If we have other neighborhood representation, I'm sorry that that wasn't more clear to me, but that is something that weighs heavily in my consideration as well. And so I'm just throwing it all out there on the table. You know, this is, this is the sort of thing where you could ping pong back and forth, what are the positives and negatives all evening? And one of the things that I rely upon is at the end of the day, there's something called, you know, a general group wisdom that comes into play. And as we're freely able to have some of these conversations, I think a lot of the values that I've expressed, that I'm sure others of you will express and you'll add to that list, will sort of filter up and a consensus candidate will become fairly obvious to us. So that's where my mind is at right now.
Thank you, Councilmember Rasslin. Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't actually know we were going to have this little conversation. So I just kind of off the cup, jotted down a couple of ideas. The first word I wrote down is integrity. I believe that every candidate that we interviewed has high integrity. I have no reason to believe that there's anything different. Experience. I do think that it does make some sense to appoint a person that's served on council before because of the learning curve, et cetera. But I will tell you, I am absolutely open-minded about appointing someone that's never served on council. So there is some truth to that argument about experience, but there's other kinds of experience too. And everyone that we see in the audience plus Joe have experience. So communication skills are very important to me. And we got a flavor of the candidate's ability to communicate effectively tonight. One of the most important things to me in serving with other council members is can we work together even when we don't agree? And I'm just going to throw out a name, Charlie Odegaard. He and I voted against each other quite often, but there was never any hard feelings and we're, I consider him a personal friend. And I look for that in every person on council. I don't expect to agree with my other council members, but I do expect that we can work together at all times. I guess those are the main things that pop into mind right now. I do support going into e-session for the discussion and I can elaborate on the reasons for that if it becomes necessary. But for now, I'll just leave that where it is. I do have reasons that I can articulate, but if there's no reason to, then I won't.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Councilmember Shumani.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Ellis. The things I jotted down too was, I'm looking for someone that can hit the ground running. You know, I definitely see the value in someone who has experience, whether it's working for the city or as a council member or even as, you know, commission experience, like all that definitely counts. But I also see the value of, you know, the experiences that others bring to the table that are different. You know, because ultimately, we work as a board, as you explained, you know, we're like a nonprofit board and our differences make us better. And so everyone brings a lot to the table and I can, you know, go name by name and express all the different values that you all bring, but you know it better than I do. And, but I definitely want someone who can join us up here and just hit the ground running and be a pillar that we can lean on, you know. When I think about former Vice Mayor Daggett, she was a pillar that we could lean on, that I was able to lean on and I definitely miss her presence. So I'm definitely looking for someone who can kind of bring that kind of strong rooted, grounded energy to the dais during hard conversations that are difficult. You know, our work is very challenging as Councilmember McCarthy said and we don't always agree. You know, there's a lot, I'm looking around the table and I think each one of us, I can think about numerous times that we haven't agreed, but we find a way to overcome, communicate and have that mutual respect and integrity. And that's just so important, but you know, to find your voice as a council member takes time and especially in this role, it's very overwhelming. We need balance on this council and I'm looking for someone who can fill the void. You know, I think Councilmember Aslan said it really nicely about Joe's indigenous background and experiences and perspective. And, you know, everyone has a different perspective that they'll be able to bring to the table and create balance. But when I'm thinking about the city at large, I'm trying to think what gaps are amongst us as a council body? Where are we missing the mark? And Councilmember Aslan, I think you make a great point, you know. We're not diverse enough. There's not enough diversity and that's something that's always in the back of my mind when we do the work we do every week. I'm looking for someone who can really help us move forward. We have so many issues and topics of interest that we're working on for the city of Flagstaff and we need to work as a team and we need someone that can help us just continue that important work, helping us to move forward. You know, I need, I'm looking for someone that's a leader, that has strong leadership qualities, even though this is a short period of time that you're going to be filling. And then lastly, I think I just, I just wanted to mention that I don't mind if we have the conversation down here or upstairs, but I want us to be able to have an inclusive and comfortable conversation. I need this to be a safe space for council. And although we might have been elected to do things in a public way, I respect the desires and the needs of each of us to want to do it upstairs. So I will support us going upstairs if that's what the council wants us to do in order to have that safe space to make it an inclusive and safe environment for us to have that real conversation that we need to have to do the best that we can for the city of Flagstaff. You know, again, the community in the city is our, is our top value and priority. And whatever it's going to take for us to do the best job we can, I support. So if that's going into e-session, then I'll just, and I'm just stating it publicly now, I support us doing so. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shumani. Councilmember Ellis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think everyone and each of you deserves a big grateful pumping heart from me. I echo what most of my council member has mentioned. I'm also looking into knowledge, skills and abilities, which is a typical kind of parameter for any recruitment, right? And hiring position. But I'm also looking into the value or the potential of the candidate, appointed council member to contribute into bringing unity and cohesion in adversity and in diversity. So, and I do thank each one of you who have, and even the all 14, all 14 who, candidates who have taken the time to submit their application and showed up last Monday to speak before council. And it's very important to me that all of you have stepped up. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmembers Ellis. And, you know, for me, really the number one criteria is, would this individual be elected if they were running and through the normal public process? I'm not considering this necessarily as a seven-month gig, a seven-month band-aid. I would like to see somebody who's going to be at this dais for four years in seven months. And then with that in mind, you know, experience is extremely important, but each of these candidates bring different lived experiences. And I'm not saying, oh, look at the resume. I'm saying different experiences, backgrounds, influences, the whole works. And, but inevitably, it is for me. Who would be voted in if we were having the election right now? And another aspect is, yes, a lot of the initiatives, the things that we have as a collective body chosen as a priority, this legislative session, our work with carbon neutrality, housing, the alternate response, which I'm very glad that our fellow council members brought up. These are very important priorities that we see huge consensus from council already on and are things that we're trying to be transformative and create real change and we, with limited time to do so. So when I look at things, I'm also looking at who's going to create the change. And also to the point with, I appreciate Vice Mayor bringing up is, what is the uniqueness? What unique thing comes to the table? And when we talk about, you know, resumes and so forth, the beauty of our democracy and our voting system is that anyone can be an elected leader. Anyone. That is the foundation at heart, that you could be a bike mechanic, a data analyst, a business owner. You know, any of these things, you can rise to the occasion to be an elected person to represent the people. So that's just kind of my general thoughts. All of these are extremely important factors. I appreciate everything that was just brought up at the table. And I'm looking forward to the deliberation, which does look like it will be going into executive session. So thank you all for putting your necks out, being here, putting your name in the hat. And I would really love to see some names as write-in candidates this year from this crowd, for real. So, thank you and photo. Yeah, but Joe stepped out, so. We didn't think of it before. We were going to see if we could get all six folks up here and get a picture of everyone. And instead, we just photobombed you while you were sitting there talking.
We could always Photoshop Joe in.
Yeah, we could, we could do that, right? Well, I don't want to leave him out. If we're going to do a picture all together, I want to make sure that we can get Joe in here as well. I just think it would be the respectful thing to do. Otherwise, we shouldn't do it. Anyways, with that though, assuming we still don't have public participation, we're moving to item number four or five, rather. And with that, meeting adjourned.